Be so kind to call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here this evening.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for a motion to approve the agenda with a couple of minor adjustments.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda modifying with the removal of item G eight and the addition of item G thirteen, which each trustee should have received. And there are copies in the back for those in attendance today. For those at home, there will be included in the final board packet, which will be on the website. There are some language change to the consent calendar. Each one of the board members should have received those updated. And there are copies in back as well. And there is a revision to the minutes from January sixteenth.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I call for a motion to approve one set of minutes from January ninth, 2018 meeting.
Supervisor, I move that the board approve the minutes from January ninth, 2018 as presented.
Second. In favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's time on the agenda for citizens' non-agenda item comments. I'm sorry. Oh, we do have two sets. Okay, fine note. Very good. The updated amended here is. Also call for a motion to approve the minute, meeting minutes from January sixteenth, 2018.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes for the meeting on January sixteenth, 2018 as revised.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now it is time for the non-agenda item, citizens' non-agenda item. At this point, okay, I know we've got two people in the audience this evening who'd like to speak. We've got Mr. Miller. George, go ahead. We'll let you go first, and then we'll have the second gentleman go. Yeah?
George Miller, I'd like to know if it's on record, contracts come due for the storage of the clay dirt behind the DPW yard. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think the contract's been renewed most likely. I'd like to know for how much, public record, isn't it? How much that is and for how many years? The next thing is I'd like to know what the plan is for that facility on Lily Road to dump, if they're, what they're going to do with it after thirty years. I understand it goes back to the county if they want to walk away from it.
Which road?
Pardon me?
Landfill at which location?
The landfill.
Okay.
On Michigan Avenue.
Okay.
And just to mention, the company was putting in a water main on Briarfield. I see they're working on Michigan Avenue. It's amazing that they have the rubber on their machines out there on Michigan Avenue when it's a US road. It's a federal road or a county road. Over there, it's a county road in the subdivision. They just run it up and down the street as they saw pleased and tore up some of the street and curbs there. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, George. Okay, moving from front to back, is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Mr. Morris, would you like to make public comment? What we'd ask you to do is please introduce yourself, give us your address, and based on years of mine conversation, I think you're going to go about five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Mel Morris. I'm the owner of Mel's Auto Clinic, Renerec, and Canton Auto Sales. I've become before the Township Board because of the lighting ordinance. Either it needs to be updated or a variance provided for small businesses along Michigan Avenue. You already received the packet, and I'm not going to read it because you all have it, but I'll just give you the highlights. I've been at Canton for forty years. I was on Canton Center in Cherry Hill for three years, then I moved up on Ford Road for the next eight years. Then I went to Wayne for thirteen, fourteen years, and then back to Canton for fifteen years on Michigan Avenue. So I've been in business for fifty-three years, forty of my years has been in Canton. I'm going to skip all of this stuff. You can read it. Included a copy of the ordinance to which I highlighted, as good as the copy machine can highlight, and it's up to four words, or five words. Five words fits me. Strictly designed for security purposes. And I designed this lighting for security purposes only. It's not a flashing light. It doesn't change colors. It's there for safety and safety only. I have a sign on my building that says Renerec, another one, Mel's Auto Clinic and Canton Auto Sales. My Renerec sign burned out about two months ago. Half of my Mel's Auto Clinic sign burned out last month, and I'm not concerned with fixing it. I don't need the business. I have lots of business. But I'm concerned with the safety of my customers and the safety of my employees. And I'm coming before this board to consider the variance or consider changing the ordinance, and let's save a life for me, huh? Save somebody from getting injured or hurt. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, if we could have a motion for payment of the bills, Treasurer Slavens.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second. Those in favor of paying the bills again, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Supervisor, would it be in order to make a motion that the board include Mr. Morris's comments in the public record?
Absolutely. That would be appropriate. And additionally, I have provided copies to legal counsel, Director of Public Safety, and Director of Municipal Services as well.
Well, if another board member would be so kind as to support that, I would make a motion that we enter this into the public record.
In favor of admitting Mr. Morris's write-up into the public record, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If we could now read the consent calendar in one motion.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as provided in the packet and revised item C one, which is consider second reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances for Canton, Michigan. And that is for the, all right, item C two, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter ten, Article three, for amusement devices and arcades. Item C three, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter eighteen, Article seven of the Canton Code of Ordinances, and that is smoking lounges. Item C four, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter eighteen of the Canton Code of Ordinances, and that is for, well, business licenses for the duration. Item C five, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter seventy-eight, Article eight of Canton Township Code of Ordinances, and that is the rental inspection program.
Second. Those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's time to move into our general calendar. First item, G one, is consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District.
Allow me to catch my breath. Supervisor, this will be in the form of two model resolutions. I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance for a proposed amendment to Section six point zero nine of Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance.
In summary, the proposed change to the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District is intended to redefine the village core and village edge area as shown on Figure one of the district guidelines. If approved, roughly ten acre tract of land along the south side of Cherry Hill, west of Denton, would become village core, allowing for slightly higher residential density and other mixed uses. We do have representatives from Pinnacle Homes here this evening, including Mr. Fingerroot. If there are any questions, now would be the time or any comments. I know Planning Commission did go through and review and approved, which is in your note as long with other details. Are there any board questions or comments?
I would ask Director Foss if he can explain this change that we're...
Sure. Is that microphone working? Okay. So, the proposed changes for this area that's highlighted in orange, it's the area south of Cherry Hill Road from Denton Road westerly to roughly where the ITC Transmission Corridor and the pathway currently exist that cross Cherry Hill. So it's the area that was originally to be envisioned as some form of mixed use development, including a mix of commercial and residential uses. The area was originally designated as edge, as is shown on this figure one. It's the area that is kind of outside of the core, but the request and recommendation from staff and Planning Commission is to include it now in the core, which will allow a slightly higher density development to be constructed in this area. What was envisioned, based on the original concept plan for Cherry Hill Village, is kind of a downtown-like look and feel where you would have taller residential and commercial structures on either side of Cherry Hill Road as you enter the village at Denton Road and drive westerly towards the village core. So it's consistent with the kind of original concept plan for the village, but really needs to be moved into the area of the core as opposed to the village edge as is defined in the existing ordinance. So what is before you tonight is a request to add this map to the zoning ordinance. That's as simple as the amendment is, which would then allow the developer to move forward with a planned development district agreement, which would come before the Planning Commission and Board, which would actually show the design of the product that they're proposing. So really, what's being requested here tonight is just simply a zoning change.
Michael?
Then, okay, so outside of the zoning, it'll still go through the PDD process, correct? To make sure it's consistent with all, okay.
That's correct.
Anne Marie?
At the Planning Commission meeting, a lot of the residents were concerned that it's an open field now, and that they're going to see structures in front of them. But when we went through it, we determined that whether it be a residential structure or commercial structure, it could be the same height. So somebody could come in right now and just, you know, build a structure without us changing the zoning. Another thing is, it was discussed that it would, it's going to be more mixed use by doing it this way also, correct? So we could bring in more businesses perhaps.
Correct. Do you know, talking to Mr. Fingerroot, you're going to reach out and work with the neighbors adjacent to the facility? Because those, they're living in homes that you had built previously, correct? Okay. Very good. Any additional board questions, comments?
What is, looking forward to be, what do you plan to build there?
Yeah, please, it'd be, so we can hear you.
I know it's in the formation stage, so I don't want to hold you down, but is there some thought as to what you'd like to build there?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm Howard Fingerroot. I'm the managing partner of Pinnacle Homes. Just by brief way of introduction, Pinnacle Homes is a Michigan-based home builder. I'm building about fourteen communities right now, and I have two communities in Canton Township, the manors at Hamlet and the corners at Cherry Hill, which is just south of the site we're talking about today. So in the corners at Cherry Hill, I'm building empty nester product, which is ranch-type product. And what I envision in the site that we're looking at today is townhome product, which I believe is very consistent with the streetscape of Cherry Hill. So right now, you have two and some three-story buildings, some commercial, some residential. I see this being as you go easterly towards Denton Road, that I think that residential is a good fit here. I think the corner piece itself, which is part of this rezoning, I could see that, and that's not going to be, I'm not going to be developing that one acre corner, I could see that having a commercial or mixed use feel. But what I'm going to propose is townhomes, and again, I think it's very consistent with what you see directly across the street. When we were in front of the Planning Commission, I had some of my homeowners that are living in ranches, they were concerned about the massing of the buildings. And like one of the trustees said, right now you can build taller buildings. But what I want to do, and what, and I'm going to have a meeting with the homeowners before I am in front of the Planning Commission again, I'm going to have these townhome buildings in the ones that are in closest proximity to the corners, I'm going to lower that down to a ranch, so it'll be at the same height as their homes, and then it will go up as it goes to the street, to Cherry Hill Village. So I'm going to work with the neighbors and try to, and show them what we're going to do, and hopefully they'll feel good about that as well.
Tim, I noticed in the write-up that if approval's given, you would actually lower it by one hundred and forty-two units, the maximum that could be built there now.
Yeah, that's a point worth noting. That's overall for the entire Cherry Hill Village development. This particular acreage, I think, would net, maybe it was twelve additional units over and above what it otherwise would, but even including that additional number of units in the total for the village, it's still one hundred and forty-two down from what was originally planned.
So there's going to be townhouse units, and then you say a couple ranch units?
Well, it will be attached to the townhomes. It'll just be one level rather than two or three level.
Have you thought of a sale price?
In the, from the high two hundreds probably, maybe, you know, transacting high twos, low threes is what we're going to be shooting for. And then actually, in terms of the question about density, we actually took density out of the corners just south of there, because there was about one hundred and forty units between single family and multifamily, and we reduced it to all single family, and we have a hundred units there. And so when you put the two together, we're still below the number.
Okay, those in favor, the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Supervisor, I further move to table consideration of the amendment for a second reading on February thirteenth, 2018.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G two. Consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Summer Park, Polte rezoning.
Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold for, hold the first reading of an ordinance for a proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton to rezone the subject parcel listed from RA Rural Agricultural District to R2, Single Family Residential District, as provided in the attached ordinance.
The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property from RA Rural Agricultural to R2, Single Residential District. The property was previously part of the Hamlet Plan Development to the north, but was sold off separately to the owner to the south and was not included in the final phases of the Hamlet that were approved pursuant to a consent judgment for the last phases of the Hamlet. The R2 zoning is consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the R2 zoning to the south and to the east and consistent with the residential density in the Hamlet. Are there, we do have representative here, Mr. Score from Polte. If there's any board questions or comments, now would be the time. Stephen?
This is that square on, or rectangle on the left? That's two hundred and thirty acres?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
I was reading it, and I was confused by that comment.
Yeah, no, the reference to the two hundred and thirty is the other property that Polte Homes have been assembling, kind of generally in this area.
Okay.
Which previously was called Society Park. So this site is contiguous to that, as is the other parcel that is the next item that's on the agenda off to the east over here.
Anne Marie?
So on this one, I mean, it doesn't show on this map, but, so currently it's RA, and they want to rezone it to R2, you know, and basically stating that we have R2 all around, but we don't. We still have RA to the north and to the east. Also, that's part of the Hamlets too, so that RA to the north is part of the Hamlets. So my concern was that it increased the density, and also in terms of the roads, I'd like to, I personally would like to see what the Roads Commission comes up with in terms of what we're going to do with the roads out there before we increase density. So I was a dissenting vote on that one.
Any additional comments or questions? Michael?
A question. Did you say it was the Hamlet? Was that, that was a result of a consent, you say consent agreement or?
So portions of the Hamlet were developed under the consent judgment that was reached with Grand Saquaw properties a number of years ago. The balance of the Hamlet, the majority of kind of what you see here anyways on this drawing, this is the original kind of Hamlet phases one and two, which were developed by Richard Lewiston's Development Company and Polte Homes a number, about a decade ago. So as Anne Marie had referenced, there is RA zoning here on top of the Hamlet property, but it was done under a planned development district agreement, which supersedes the underlying zoning for that particular area. So it was developed at a more dense R2 development. And then the other section right here, which is zoned RA, this is the property that we talked about probably about six weeks ago, I believe, in a closed session with the Township Attorney regarding the Hamlet pond. So everything else otherwise around it is all R2.
Is there an opportunity, Tim, for us to get feedback from the county on the roads? You know, you've got Geddes and...
Yeah, indeed, you know. We work with the county a lot on road issues, and we have a forthcoming meeting this, tomorrow in fact, with Wayne County, and we can bring it up.
One of our open items? Can it be added?
It can be added to the list for tomorrow's meeting.
And where's entrance or exit to the property?
Yeah, it's not been designed yet. The, what was, again, what was called Society Park, it had, I think, a couple entrances here along Geddes Road, but again, this is just zoning at this point. Polte Homes will work over the next number of months to come up with the actual development plans and show where the entrances will be, whether those will be one or two on Geddes Road and, you know, probably one on Denton Road. That's to be figured out by the developer, the Township Engineering Staff, and then ultimately the county staff.
How do you get from that straight area to Denton Road?
You get there through this site to the south, which Polte has also conditionally, I think, assembled with the property owner.
That ridge to the west? That on ridge or?
Ridge, no, actually, the county line is right here, and it's all farmer's field. So Ridge runs diagonally. So Ridge Road where the roundabout is by the Charter School in Ypsilanti Township is outside of, that's in Washtenaw County.
Okay. But, so does Polte own everything continuous where it says site, all the way to Denton? So right now?
Sorry, what's that?
Does Polte own everything from where it says, in the area that says site, that's continuous?
To the south there in the middle?
Right. So this would add to that continuous piece of land? Okay. And is it in contiguous into Washtenaw County to Ridge Road or, or is it Napier? No, where's Ridge Road? I'm sorry.
If I could, if I could just interrupt for a second, nobody's going to be able to hear anything that Polte is talking from the podium, so either Joe's got to go to the podium or...
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Joe.
Tim, so is there property in, all the way to Ridge Road?
No.
No.
That's Washtenaw County. Ridge Road west of this location is actually located in Washtenaw County.
How far out is it?
Like, it's probably another thousand feet at least, at least a quarter mile, I'd say.
So the intent isn't to build the community all the way to Ridge Road into the other community? It'll stop there. It'll only be accessible from the south and the east?
Correct.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Oh, I had another question. Do you, do you know what the residential, I'm sorry, like, so in the PDD for the Hamlets to the north, do you know what the breakdown would be with regard to the, what the residential density would be? I know there's a brief statement made in the, in the Planning Commission where I believe Township Planner stated that it was consistent with R2 zoning to the southeast and consistent with residential density in the Hamlet.
It's roughly two per acre. I don't know the exact calculation. I think, I don't know that we've actually updated that since the consent judgments went through, but everything based on the original PDD and the consent judgment was all revolving around two per acre for the entire development.
How far away, my map that I have from Jeff shows that, how far away is Napier Road from that?
Napier Road does not exist at this location. Napier Road exists north of Cherry Hill. Napier ends at Cherry Hill and runs north from there, and then it kind of jogs over to Ridge by the Village Arts Factory site, and then Ridge runs kind of diagonally from that location back down to where that Charter School is in Washtenaw County.
My map just happens to stop, and it looks like it's one road. Okay.
Yeah, sometimes it's confusing because you get a street line that runs from Napier all the way down, and it looks like a road.
Yeah. Okay.
No additional comments? Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so I believe we've got six one there.
Correct.
Clerk Segrist, thank you very much. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to table consideration of the amendment for a second reading on February thirteenth, 2018.
Second. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those opposed? I'm sorry, I assume we're, okay, we're good. Motion carries unanimously. Item G three, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning Accord of Zoning Code of Ordinances regarding the Volk Music rezoning.
Right, this is going to be in the form of two motions as well. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance for a proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton to rezone the subject parcels, all three of those listed, from rural residential to R2, Single Family Residential District, as provided in the attached ordinance. Thank you, Diane.
The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property from rural residential to R2, Single Family Residential District, two parcels that front on to Geddes, and one parcel fronts on to Denton. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the existing R2 zoning to the north, south, and west, which is consistent with the future land use map and of the comprehensive plan. The parcels will be combined with the property to the west for future development. Are there any board comments or questions? Again, this is another Polte facility, so same team.
Will this be combined in with all to create one big? Sorry to make you all...
Yeah, the answer to your question is yes, it will be combined.
Combined with, I'm sorry, the, which?
A previous motion.
Right, so what Mr. Score's referring to is... Right, so what Mr. Score's referring to is this property here, which fronts on Denton and a little bit on Geddes here, will be combined with all the properties generally kind of in this area, and then the properties over here to the west, and then the property that we just talked about right up here. And all of those contiguous properties would make up one or more of the developments that, that they're proposing to do on, on this site. One thing that's a little bit different, too, from the prior one, the prior rezoning, is this one is currently zoned RR, but just for kind of history's sake, the reason that these other properties were rezoned to R2 a number of years ago was because that there were, sorry, there were proposed developments here, and when the, when the economy, when the development economy especially tanked in late 2005, early 2006, all these projects stopped. So, the rezonings were done in advance of that. This parcel was not one of the original parcels of those developments, and that's why it's still sitting out there at RR, even though the future land use plan calls for R2 in this area.
Owns RA, just above the R2 site there.
Yeah, legally, that's still owned by the township, that's the pond.
Okay, okay.
Just got a consent.
And we're, we're working to transfer the pond over to the Hamlet Pond Association, kind of, Kristen and I just talked about it today, so.
So, from my own information, what does bulk music refer to?
What are the names?
Yeah, what, what does that name refer?
The individuals that are the property, are, or were the property.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Bulk and music, those are the former property owners?
No, they're, they're the current property owners.
Oh, 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 you have it.
We have it under contract, we control the property under an option, but we don't own the property today, yeah.
Clearly, Mr. Score's setting up the ducks to, to wrap things up here, so. No additional comment? Those in favor of the first motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a second motion for this?
The motion pick carry unanimously?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, allow me to get back to my place. I move to table consideration of the amendment for a second reading on February 13th, 2018.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G4, consider award or purchase order contract to OHM Advisors for the completion of the update to Canton Water Distribution, Distribution System Master Plan.
Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order contract to OHM Advisors for completion of Canton's Water Distribution System Master Plan update for an amount not to exceed $33,500 under the existing master services agreement.
Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, MDEQ, requires public drinking water systems to update water master plans on a five-year cycle. OHM Advisors has completed numerous recent studies of Canton Water System, and recently completed the design and construction administration of our new water storage facility. With OHM's familiarity with Canton's water distribution systems, staff is recommending that the required water model update be awarded to OHM in the amount of thirty, as stated, $33,500. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5, consider purchase of water meters and metering control devices for 2018.
All right, this is going to be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to accept the quote from Aetna Supply Company and approve a purchase order not to exceed $1,018,520 and authorize the Public Works Division to purchase the necessary meter equipment and supplies.
In order to supply and maintain water service for regis, residential and commercial accounts, Public Works Division maintains an inventory of supplies. This inventory is replenished yearly in order to meet projections for the upcoming year. Equipment such as water meters and radio read transceivers, MXU units, are installed for new projects and also replaced as equipment wears out. The Public Works Division continues an ongoing replacement program for older meters and MXU devices. This is an ongoing program that allows for older, less accurate devices to be replaced with new, accurate devices that provide less water loss throughout the system. Canton's 24,000-plus active water accounts are now all equipped with radio read devices, which allow a streamlined, less labor-intensive collection of meter data. In the past, Canton has purchased from Aetna Supply Company, a sole-source supplier for census meters and equipment. For this reason, we are requesting a waiver, the purchase policy requirements to solicit bids, most of the unit prices stayed the same for 2018 compared to last year. And again, the total value for 2018 is $1,018,520. Any board comments or questions? This is a, kind of a once-a-year buy, so this is our second go-around with these for the new year. Seeing no comments, no questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6. Oh, I'm sorry, second motion, thank you, Diane.
I, I think, rereading it, I didn't need to make a second motion, but I will, I apologize. I move to, Mr. Supervisor moved to waive the finance purchasing policy requiring formal bids as these items are supplied under a sole-source contract through the Aetna Supply Company. Thank you.
Favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6, consider approval of an extension of the contract with Hydro Corp. Incorporated to implement Canton's cross-connection control program.
Supervisor, I move to approve a three-year extension of the professional services contract with Hydro Corp. Incorporated to provide management services and inspections for the Township's cross-connection control program for an amount of $34,140 per year, and to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the agreement on behalf of the Township.
Summary, the Michigan Department, MDEQ again, environmental quality, requires municipalities to provide for a safe water supply system through effective cross-connection control program, that's backflow prevention, validating that that's functioning property. The MDEQ requires municipalities to inspect commercial, industrial, institutional facilities and submit annual reports for their programs. Since 2006, Canton has contracted this program out to Hydro Corp. Incorporated. The current contract will expire in February 2018 and has a provision for extension. Hydro Corp. Services have been exceptional, they have upheld their contractual obligations and achieved goals expected of the requested services. The new contract will continue to achieve the same goals at the annual rate of $34,140. The current three-year contract has a rate of $32,820, so the new rate is 4% greater. An extension clause for month-to-month service also contained in the proposed contract at the end of the three-year term if needed. Are there any questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G7, I assume there was only one motion there. G7, consider approval of vehicles for 2018.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of 19 vehicles totaling $494,151 as depicted in the spreadsheet attached.
Police Service Division Fleet Services evaluates all vehicles that meet minimum replacement criteria each year and recommend replacement as parts of capital, as part of the capital improvement process. These 19 vehicles are budgeted for replacement and/or meet the service needs of the various users. The on-street vehicle fleet today is 171 total units. The Township, again, will utilize existing publicly bid government pricing contracts administered, administered through Oakland County for all GMC purchases, and Macomb County for all Ford purchases. The units taken out of service will be rotated elsewhere in the fleet or be auctioned off using our online auction system, BidCorp.com for disposal. The value of the purchases as stated was $494,151, and each unit has adequate funds budgeted in their respective department budgets. And there's a list of vehicles there as well, it's, now, you're showing us miles, no, those are the new, new vehicles, but, these all, the vehicles being replaced meet our criteria for replacement. In short, is there any questions? Yes, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Are any of those vehicles, the diesel vehicles?
No, in fact, we just had this discussion a, a couple weeks ago after you sent me the email about the, the grant, so, none of the ones in, in 2018 are diesels. We do have two diesels in 2019 that we're going to consider targeting the grant money for.
No other questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G9, because we're going to bypass G8. Consider approval for sports field lighting replacement.
In the form of two motions, potentially. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the contract for sports field lighting replacement at the Canton Sports Center with Rawhorn Electric Incorporated at 17171 23 Mile Road, Macomb, Michigan, 48042, in the amount of $88,300 plus a contingency of $11,700 for a total not to exceed $100,000 to be paid from account number, from the account number listed, the Capital Outlay Building and Improvements Account.
Canton Sports Center has 12 lighted sports fields that are used seven nights a week from mid-April through mid-October. Based on the general inspection of the sports facility, observations revealed that there could be physical problems with some of the 52-ball field light poles at the site. Therefore, in 2017, Manix Smith was contracted to perform a structural assessment of all the poles. The outcome of the inspection determined that five of the existing poles are in very poor condition and should be replaced prior to the start of the 2018 sports season. In 27, in December 2017, a request for proposal was issued to seek company to provide design, removal, and replacement of five light poles. Work must be completed prior to the opening of 2018 season on April 9th in order to open the fields. Based on the RFP, Leisure Services is recommending Rawhorn Electric to perform the work specified, and I can tell you that this has been one of great consternation of the last several weeks between finance and Leisure Services and myself, because we knew we had an issue out there. The scope got a little bit bigger, at first we were looking at three poles. Based on the inspection, we do have to do the five, and I think the team's done a good job scratching the money together, so we can do this sooner than inspect it. So, are there any additional questions, comments?
Is it just the poles and the light equipment will be main kept, or you'll get new light equipment as well?
It'll be new lighting as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the $10,000 that was going to be budgeted from Capital Outlay Land Improvements, I was just curious what, what that was initially intended for.
Those were going to be improvements to the dog park for some shade structures.
Shade structures? Because I was out there over the weekend because of the thaw and it's a mud pit out there, but anyway, okay. And then, the, I noticed we've got 60 from the Community Improvement Fund.
Correct, it was going to be $50,000 for signage throughout this building to, to just upgrade the wayfinding sign and assist public safety should they get a 911 call. But that's something that can be deferred. And then there was also $10,000 that was, we have $100,000 for general roofing repairs, mechanical repair, $100,000 for mechanical repairs, and then $20,000 for non-reparable items. So, across those three items, we were reducing by a total of 10,000 for that.
That mean that those projects will not be achieved or realized? Do they get, they get pushed off or can you still do them?
The signage will get deferred, and then the, the other items are more of a contingency-type item for roofing repairs and mechanical repairs for items as they come up throughout the year. We don't have specific designated items that need to be addressed.
What do we add on the Community Improvement Plan?
Capital Improvement?
Capital Improvement Plan.
So, we've had some meetings with OHM. The capital that was presented to the board back in, I believe, October at a study session, they kind of talked about the plans of what we had to address this year. They, they thought everything we were addressing this year was appropriate. We're looking at getting some more documentations. We got a rough draft of some of them. We're expecting to get, in the next couple of months, kind of the finalized product. So, we don't have, I don't have really an answer for you on that yet, but it's coming in the next couple of months. They didn't think there was anything of urgency that we had to address for 18 that was not already being addressed, though. Back to the, I just want to touch on that signage a little bit further, that $50,000 that you asked about. Back, a couple years ago, there's some legislation pending that was going to require all public buildings, any building really, to have signage, so if a 911 call came in, they could tell exactly where the call came from and have signage within buildings to say, this call came from the third floor and this suite number. So, there was legislation pending that was going to require us to do that. At this point, that has not passed. We anticipated at some point that it could come, but we put it in the budget anticipating it was going to be a requirement, and that is not a legal requirement yet. So, as we were doing the phone project, which is going out to bid Thursday, we were going to try to do all that in conjunction with our phone project and get the signage labeled, but that signage right now is not a legal requirement, so we're pushing that off because we don't know if it ever is going to be a legal requirement. So, we put it in the budget because we thought it is coming, and it hasn't.
Additionally, on the capital, we're, we're still working through with Amoresco, who's doing the energy performance contract and evaluating everything. They just gave us the, the first round of kind of their assessment, and that may address some of our roofing issues for some of our older roofs that we use the, the $100,000 for annually, so that may help alleviate some of those funds so that we wouldn't need those if we move forward with that project.
Punchline is, we have a safety issue out at the ball field with these poles, they have to be replaced. The scope is bigger than what we had originally anticipated, but I think the team did a very good job of finding offsets throughout that are logical, rational, and make sense for deferrals that can, we can, we can handle without hurting ourselves.
Like to me?
It, we did evaluate LED as a substitute, and it's been a common question, but to, to mix LED with the current type of lighting that's out there would kind of cause a, a different grade of lighting, so it's not really a feasible thing without replacing all of the lights to be LED, and that'd be about 1.5 million to do that, so that's
Anne Marie?
A little pricey.
I don't remember the name of that company that you had here before, they were going to look at our facilities and see if there's any?
Amoresco.
That's Amoresco that I was just referring to.
Okay, are they looking at energy storage also and maybe solar to help with the lighting?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendments. Oh, boy. We're going to see an increase of $100,000 to the Capital Outlay Buildings and Improvement Account, and decreases in $10,000 to the Capital Outlay Land Improvement Fund, the decrease of $30,000 to the Capital Outlay Vehicles, a decrease of $60,000 to transfer out Community Improvement Account, decrease, a decrease in $60,000, transfer in of the general fund, decrease in $50,000 Capital Outlay Buildings and Improvements, and a decrease in $10,000 Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment Accounts respectively.
Thank you, Diane. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider the purchase of 14 Taser XP26 units.
Super, Mr. Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the, the purchase of 14 Taser XP26 packages from Axon Enterprises, Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of $19,477.54 utilizing budgeted drug forfeiture funds.
Second. 2014, the Police Department established a replacement schedule for Taser units, phasing out older models gradually and purchasing additional to accommodate increasing staff needs. This year, the Department's requesting to purchase 14 Taser XP26 units, holsters, battery packs, and four-year warranties from Axon as stated, in the amount of $19,477.54. Any questions, comments? Anne Marie?
I think I had asked this before, but do you, then, do you take the used packs and you return them and get a credit at all, or, no, they throw them away or what?
Yeah, they're properly disposed of. The, the Tasers that are being replaced are beyond their service life, so there's really, the electronics on the inside of them, there's really nothing that could be done with them.
Michael?
Can you just walk me through drug forfeiture funds, how we acquire that, that money?
Sure, so the drug, the drug forfeiture funds come in Sure, so the drug, the drug forfeiture funds come in from our participation with the Drug Enforcement Administration, our task force officers that are assigned to that, and then also any drug forfeitures that we make as a policing agency. So, if we, you know, if we happen to stop a vehicle and we are able to seize property because of the transportation of narcotics, once that case is adjudicated, that becomes drug forfeiture funds, and then also our participation in the Western Wayne Narcotics.
No further question, comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G11, consider the purchase of six hydraulic lift stretcher systems.
Supervisor, this is going to be in the form of two motions. I move... I got lost. All right, Mr. Supervisor, I, I'm sorry. The link is messed up. There it is. I move to approve the purchase of six PowerPro XT hydraulic lift stretcher systems from Stryker Medical Sales Corporation in the amount of $256,152, and approve an additional $9,000 to InstaTech LLC for installation of the units.
Fire department's requesting purchase six power hydraulic lift stretcher systems for the fleet of ambulances. The power lifts are beneficial for multiple reasons, including the reducing of the risk of potential injury to firefighters and paramedics and the patients during the loading and unloading of the ambulance, which in turn reduces the risk of financial loss to the township via lost wages, workers' comp, and lawsuits. In 2017, township posted a formal invitation to bid for six battery-powered hydraulic lift ambulance cot stretcher systems. Stryker Medical Sales Corporation submitted the lower of two bids received at the $256,152 in the attached deck. Please note that neither bid included installation, although Stryker did offer an additional quote of $9,000 by their partner vendor, InstaTech LLC, which then, when added to the stretcher quote, was still lower than the second bid received for the stretcher's only system. Are there any board questions? Just Emery?
I guess the same question. Do they, if Stryker comes in and installs them, do they take the old equipment and then give us credit for that at all, or can we sell the older stretchers? Or do they throw those out?
Yeah, that, the whole reason for replacement of the stretchers is those stretchers are beyond their service life. So, what the fire department, what Chris originally had was a multi-year budgeted approach to try to phase them in, and so we were going to replace the stretchers first, add the power load system second, but then what we found was, is the mounting hardware inside of the ambulances, that currently the stretcher goes in and the, holds the stretcher in place while the vehicle's in motion, no longer meets the standards. So, when we buy new stretchers, we had to upload the mount, which is now the power load. So, the short answer is there's, they, those stretchers can't be reused or resold because they no longer meet the standards.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yes, I have a question for the Finance Director, if I can on this one. For the budget adjustment that's attached to this, it looks like the increased appropriation on our board packet is $216,152, and the decreased appropriations is $215,152. Is that a typo?
Thinking yes, sir.
$1,000 discrepancy between them, because on, in the...
They should definitely be the same.
Okay, so in the budget implications and account number summary, it shows that both of them should be 215,152. All right, when I make the second motion, I should probably...
Go to the higher figure and just...
56 or 216?
Talking about a half percent on the $200,000 value.
Yep, it's a typo, so it should be 215.
All right.
Lower value, very good.
All right, thank you.
You just saved $1,000, well done.
Balanced the budget, that's what you did.
Appreciate that, too.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Libiting stuff for those at home.
Okay, so we have an initial motion, and did the initial motion have the dollar value?
No.
It's irrelevant to the first motion.
Very perfect, okay. So, those in favor of the first motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Supervisor, I move to approve the proposed amendment to the 2018 fire budget to accommodate this complete purchase, and that is an increase to the appropriations account listed, the Capital Outlay Machinery and Equipment, in the amount of $215,152, and a decrease in appropriations to the transfer of fund balance for $215,152.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G12, approve 2018 blanket purchase orders.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the 2018 blanket purchase orders as attached.
Second. This is a maintenance thing that we do once a year. At the beginning of the year, we've got blanket purchase orders to allow for recurring purchases of specific service or commodities when the quantity of items or frequency of the service cannot be fully determined in advance. Attached list, that's in your board packet, is a list of all the blanket purchase orders. Per Canton's Purchasing Policy F10, blanket purchase orders will not be issued in excess of $30,000, nor will a single purchase be in excess of $1,000 be approved without the board's approval. So, this is pretty routine stuff. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G13, which is our added item, consider authorizing the purchase of property, and we have one motion here, not two.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor, yourself, to engage in negotiations for the purchase of property as directed and further to sign any documents to complete the purchase.
Second.
Summary, as discussed in our closed session, the township has recently became aware of an availability of some property that if acquired, would be very beneficial to the long-term needs of our community. Those, any comments? Should be none coming out of closed session. In favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That, I believe, concludes our formal agenda this evening. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, any board comment?
I would just like to say that there was a fantastic Martin Luther King Day celebration. A gentleman to my left, Supervisor, had made some fantastic remarks, and it was a good time.
Emery Michael did a good job singing. You blended in, guys.
Lip syncing.
You were in the community choir.
Loved your bow tie.
Thank you. All righty. Can I have a motion to call for a German? Emery, is there any additional comment?
No.
Okay.
So moved.
John's got a call.
Support.
Those in favor of ending our meeting, please state aye.
Aye.
Good night, all, thank you.